Is what he was saying.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at thirty big blind hijack versus button. Uh, we played a flop turn and river. Let's go. And we're gonna move the hints. Why does it? Okay, that's just alright. So we check her very often, right? No? Okay.
Yeah, or bet small.
Majority bet, haha. Why would you wanna bet on a trip board like that? We go pull or two? Cause we got the the pair advantage.
Why are aces? Oh, well, they can't be arranged, never mind. Yeah, I think we have more aces. In range than he does.
Yeah, we got the best ones, too.
Yeah, we are, we are the best, we are the best. That doesn't, that doesn't matter. We can't go wrong.
And then quite honestly, King High's probably ahead.
I thought so, but it's a majority bet, yeah.
I call. I call. Super small sizing.
Okay. It's raising thirty percent.
Uh, I'm not a fan of that, but. You got a blocker. Block that or check?
Well. The flush it, I don't think the flush is very relevant on a full house type board.
No.
You wanna put some?
How did you get here again? I I'd walked away. Was this like it looks check, 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 check?
Tiny bad call.
You faced a tiny bet. Well, if you face the tiny bet, you probably try to show it down, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
If it went check, 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 check all the way to the river, I think maybe you could try to bluff this, but.
I don't think we'd be bluffing if we got all the way to the river, no, but.
Maybe not, right? Maybe not.
He has on an ace six ace four is kind of kind of the nuts.
Alright, so he bet really small. This guy's saying he's got the ace or a queen.
He's betting big, he says small.
Like, uh. Yeah, I don't know. I would fold. I'm thinking so much. I was wondering about a jam, but I thought it was too ridiculous.
So did I.
So I g- okay, so the question is in my mind, how many ace X or how many queen X does he bets that small with on the turn? Would he size up? On the turn if he had a queen?
All in works here a ton.
Well, all in works here a ton versus the solver. We might just be, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
If you do this in your game, you might just be getting called with an ace here a lot, but yeah.
Well, in my, in in my game, I would know to fold because the sizing is too large, which means when they do that, they have it live. That's not the thing some I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight, six, three. Uh, you know, I could see a case for maybe betting this out of position, but I play check. I just play check.
Too good to bet. No? No? Yes, no?
Are these gonna be all raised call, open, and then a call everywhere? Okay.
So this hand makes some sense because you get better hands to fold, right? And um, if you get called when you bet, you just have a mountain of equity at like thirty big blinds is what I was thinking. And then also like, I guess, like the other part is like your your card matching with Jack X, like your Jax and your Queens. Which are kind of high frequency big bets or bets, not necessarily big bets.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, five point one two either way, yeah.
I I play this checking game a lot, though, to be honest. I kinda like playing the check node.
Oh, yeah.
When you check and face a bet, are you calling or raising?
Always check raising.
Uh, that's a good question, Nick. Uh, I would probably raise, to be honest, like you got two overs, a flush draw, backdoor straight draws. Do I really care?
I I raise as well, uh, but I think it's cause population is gonna oversee that or over stab.
Yeah.
Right, I forced them.
They struggle against the check raise.
Yeah.
Would you go smaller or kind of big?
Uh, I think this is a board we wanna polarize. I don't think that's small. It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, yeah, go big. He bets small, go big.
Can't be raised, though.
Yeah, we can do.
If he bet big, it's fine.
So the question in my mind is like, if he comes back and just jams, how do we hold up for a second? I think we hold up pretty well, so I'm okay check raising it.
Yeah.
Alright, so this would be a hand that you could you could bet out of position sometimes. Like, he's gonna have hands like sixes, eights. He's gonna have like middling cards. I feel like you could get folds for with a hand like this.
Anything above a seven is gonna call you.
It's all call.
Yeah, probably.
Dixies are calling.
Probably.
I feel like, okay, so we saw this. If you unblock the flush interaction and the lower the pair. The more of a betting out of position thing it was, as kind of like, I guess, balancing bluffs or whatever, but. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a lot of that in my game. I'm just recognizing what we looked at. I I would play check intuitively.
I would rather check with the spade in my hand. I think for betting, yeah, it'll be like a combo out of line betting. But I think it's just like denial of equity and.
Yeah, exactly. Are you heartbroken if you have to fold this?
Like when you're betting, you're just trying to get like king, ten of diamonds, something like that.
They're going to?
Yeah, I don't think you would polarize, but it's just, that's not the case here. Trying to read the tea leaves.
Alright.
Oh, no spade, check.
How many flush draws does he check back in position? Like, how many open-ended straight draws and stuff like that is he checking?
No mix. I'll probably check back like, what, forty percent of them?
No, we just got showdown at this point.
Do we?
Uh, yeah.
I kinda wanna bet small now after it goes check, check, but I could see, I could see checking being a thing.
I don't think he has many queens or many spades after he checks back, right? So it's just like, we're good. We're gonna win.
Are you now?
Yeah.
Yep, you are.
Unless an ace or a ten rolls off.
Now, what do you do?
Oh.
A call.
See, I would be, I I'd probably fold. Yeah, I mean, you do, you do have the the straight draw, but.
No spade, you're dreaming, yeah.
Oh, dreams do come true, Chris.
So why not be good, dude?
It's fair.
I think you probably, you might have donks here.
Maybe small. I don't think you've, I don't think five. I would say like you're either doing one point five or check here.
I think it's probably check, but I think if you have a eight, you might start donking.
Yeah.
An eight makes sense. I do like donking an eight, I think.
What eight, yeah, at this point, two, two of them or nothing, right?
He should have an eight here. Sometimes he started a betting dialogue on the turn, so like he picks up some equity. If he has like king eight or something, uh, ace eight. Jack eight, oh, that's.
No eight, that's the term.
You don't think?
Sure.
I bet, I bet, well, I I bet a lot of eights on the turn.
Okay.
If he has like king eight of diamonds, I I'm sure he's betting.
I would, I would think you bet a ton of eights on the turn.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the problem with column threes, you got three outs, and that's just a dummy. Even another three isn't great.
Is this guy betting a lot of eight something?
Looks to be. It's actually like his most bet combos.
And why do you think that is?
It's easy. He picked up equity on the turn, like he picked up marginal equity.
Slinky four?
Well, it it opens up the sneaky six.
I mean, it's an unfair hand that gets better hands to fold, like we're, I was folding threes to a bet. So like, getting king eight is just profitable.
Well, yeah, I mean, it it checks all the boxes, right? So Jack eight gets better hands to fold, check mark. Picked up marginal equity, like I picked up a little bit of equity on the turn, check mark, like, um. It's got a lot of river cards that can bluff, check mark. I mean, it just, it checks a lot of boxes, right?
Alright, Jack eight. The upper dangler to what could be a straight. Alright. And then what? I would bet sixty here.
I don't like betting sixty, cause I feel like you're isolating yourself against this value. And uh, you're, I think if you're getting value, like I would go smaller.
Yeah, it's a disaster if you're up since you bet sixty, right?
I I cry.
You're betting threes, you need a spade. I don't think you're gonna bet this combo.
I'm with Nick, to be honest. I like playing, I like protecting the checking range with this, uh, but I was gonna say if. It would be one point five, and that seems to be like the most competitive EV, but.
Yeah. Agreed.
Oh, man, you didn't even think about it, Louis.
No, you have the straight. What do you wanna think about? SPR is two, I haven't.
You know what I wanna think about, Louis, is I wanna think at the end of the month when I'm reviewing all of my blunders, the hundred and seventy big blinds. Or the seventeen big blinds for one hundred I lost here. That's what I wanna think about.
How we don't have a spade, how we, he's betting all of his eights on the turn.
How he bet two X basically on the river? It's a, it's a, this massive overbet.
So you guys have a long here.
It's a long way from a standard call.
Alright, so I would say this, if you have the three of spades, I feel like it's a little more interesting, but I think. Yeah, I think it's a little more interesting, right, Sam?
I think it's still probably a fold, cause you, the the only combo you're blocking is uh, like ace, spades, three spades.
Okay, so it is calling with that, but and it's probably just cause it's it's probably cause we, how we played it, Nick, like we played it. Super passively and it's like probably one of our best bluff catchers, right?
Yeah.
Besides eight eight.
Yeah. Exactly, we need.
But, um. Yeah, I mean, like, it it it's it's super indifferent. It's kind of like whatever.
Ace six of hearts calling?
Spades, you gotta flush. Oh, no, the hearts are calling. Yeah, I mean, I I guess it's, you're just unblocking the bluffs, I guess, I mean.
I'm not fine, I'm not fine.
Ace six is blocking two pair.
Seems, seems wild, like, uh.
I think he's, he's never two Xing with two pair ever.
Yeah, that's interesting. What is he, what there is two X bluffs? Oh, it looks like, that's pretty red. There's a lot of two X bluffs out there, like Jack nine. Is it just the flush that's going? So Jack nine's doing twelve. So click the all-in button real quick, just so we can see. Um, eights are obvious. Jack nine i- is going for it. King nine is going for it. The, I mean, those are just spade, those are just spades, though, so.
Yeah, those are spades. It's blue spades, there you go.
Airballs, this is what we care.
King nine. So only nine straights are. The bus will get our shots.
Yeah, nine X blocking the nuts.
I like how the king is more relevant, just because like the the jacks and the tens. Are gonna be more sticky, interacting between the queen and the seven, so like. They're gonna have more folds from that region, which is kind of interesting. It's kind of like opposite of what we usually see, right? You would expect like. Low, us to bluff from the bottom up, but it's kind of the opposite here. Just because like the the king is like a true, like, the the king's just unblocking everything, like all of this continues. And we lose to ace high, it just makes a lot of sense coming from king nine as opposed to nine, ten or whatever.
Why, why does it say all in only one point three six combos? Oh, that's, that's just.
Yeah, he's.
I, I got it, sorry. It's not over.
You just don't rea- you don't make it here very frequently and bluff for that size.
So, okay, we don't call with the street. I thought it was an easy call.
He had the king nine of hearts. What a joker.
The one hand.
Well, most people, I don't think are ever playing it that way.
Alright, ace, king, two tone is kind of interesting, like we have the pretty clear range advantage.
We'll have to bet a little bit there.
You need a spade?
I would play. I honestly, I think if you're gonna bet, you'd probably not want the spade, but I, um. I'm checking here in game, like.
I'm checking for sure.
Hey, but he never has, you know?
He doesn't have ace, king. He does have a seven. He does have some king, seven.
Are you betting for value or as a bluff?
That's a good question.
Ooh, never bets.
I'm never betting. Like, this is a board we're polarizing. We're not really gonna bet small. It's, we have a really good hand or nothing.
Right, and look at the si- the sizing represents that, like fifty-five plus is what you need to be bringing to the table here.
Fifty-five plus, oh, sizing, gotcha.
Yeah, percentage.
This is like the first flop where none of these pairs bet.
And like, he's gonna connect really well, well with this board too. It's like, we have more junk here than he does.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, we have the nut advantage, but he he definitely has some stuff here. Like, we have aces, kings, ace, king, but. He's gonna have pocket sevens, he's gonna have king, seven, ace, seven, he's gonna have spades.
He's gonna have a lot of pair, he's gonna have a lot of pairs of aces and kings. Bunch of ace, actually, yeah.
Are you guys betting with your sevens like that, though?
Uh, I'm not gonna lie, I don't have that in my game. You know, uh, the seven's kind of interesting, alright? It makes a lot of sense when you think about it, right? He doesn't have ace, king, so if you are blocking bottom pair here on a board this polarizing. He has like, he's just gonna have airballs if you're blocking seven X.
That's right. Good idea.
Like, you're putting king X in the box here, because we have all the better aces. So like, if you bet, let's say you polarize with ten, seven suited, what does he do with his uh, king ten or whatever?
He calls.
Maybe. King ten's indifferent. Even king jack is kind of like starting to uh, fold.
You're getting age to fold, I'm sorry, fold, tends to fold, jacks to fold.
My king jack, I'm sorry, king, queen. I said king jack, I meant king, queen. Yeah, honestly, this is, uh, okay, I learned something today. Thank you, Ken.
Tricky spots, right?
Well, I, well, it's just, I was thinking at like a level, level two. And that, that right there is like a level three thought process, right? Like that. There's a bit of extra degree of depth there. Betting the sevens, because you basically, because he doesn't have the the top of the range, and you really just kind of box up king X. And in between is kind of cool. So check, check, um. Yeah, I'm, I I think you probably just continue with this.
I think you wanna bet reverse linearly, so this will probably bet more than like, cleans your jacks.
Makes sense.
I think you can check more bet, I think either one's fine. Nope, just try.
If it's not a bet on the flop. I don't, why it would be a bet on the time?
Showing us down.
I want a value bet. Um, okay, maybe not.
What do you get value from?
Seven X.
It seems very thin. Didn't really have a lot of seven X. He's three betting a lot of them pre-flop.
Yeah.
This, I bet big. One of our best queens, right?
No.
Connected, connected, it's a contested board. We got one of our best queens and we got a spade. I think we bet big.
You know, I I I don't hate it, Ken, but hijack first button. I'm just playing check with this part of my range.
Check raise is a hundred percent then, right?
I would check raise this. This is strong enough to withstand.
This is mostly a check, you can also bet.
I'm on board with Ken.
Well, thirty percent of the time, it's it's fine.
And I like to score that, though. I would have made a mistake in that big.
Yeah.
I think, I think Louis is right. I think if you don't have a spade, you might lean larger. And that's, that's here. Yeah, that's heuristically true. So you see the 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 light red coming in pretty heavily.
Not a flip, it's gonna get deeper.
A little bit deeper, yeah. I would. Um, check, check. Alright, so. He does have some nine, ten, but, so we can't go extremely polar, but I I don't think that's gonna keep us from going five, five, five here.
Yeah.
My bet sizing as well.
I think three point seven, fifty-five percent.
I don't hate that, Ken. I think three point seven and five, five, five are both reasonable answers here.
And having a spade blocks some stuff that he's gonna just like float with, so that makes me wanna go small too.
He's gonna have, he's gonna have Jack ten here, he's gonna have eight, ten, sometimes. He's gonna have spades. Every once in a while. Are you cheating, Louis?
I'm like five point five. How often is he supposed to check back here? Cause I wanted the check raise.
He's gonna check back roughly, the heuristic is roughly forty-five percent of the time.
He's at sixty here.
Uh, yeah, this board is, um. Yeah, this board does have like check raise written all over it, so I could see the. The checking qualities being a little more, you know.
Let's try it. Say that's big, Louis, check raise.
I would click it here with this kind of a hint.
Well.
Um, say.
Need a screen.
Gotta be top, top, top.
You need two pairs or your absolute effective nut top pair. Cause he, I guess he does have king, queen here.
Yeah, but what if he just bet small?
It's more of a thing.
More, right? But not with the spade, no matter what we do, spade is killing the action.
Yeah, you want him bluffing spades, right?
Now. So the smaller the bet, the more of a thing it kind of becomes, but yeah.
Not really, right?
Not really.
And then. Do we lead out? With it a lot.
What do you mean? Uh, I don't think a ton, I I enough. There, there, it's a reasonable amount, to be honest. You seem, you seem more protected and comfortable checking with the spade.
Okay, with. So three point seven, just call against that. Check. What is he gonna do?
Oh, we could those call.
I think you just call.
Never raise?
No.
You're isolating yourself again against his value when you raise.
Yep.
And we're going broke.
And if you were gonna do it with anything, you'd do it with, uh, without a spade. So. Alright, do you ever have a donking range here?
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing. Um.
I don't think the equity shifts at all with the eight, so I would say no.
Yeah, he's just gonna have some check back sometimes. Maybe, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with you, Ken. I I think checking. And capturing value from his bluffs is good. It just kind of sucks when he checks back a hand like queen ten here, right?
And it sucks when we get here and we have like king ten.
Yeah, well, that, that too. That too.
We probably don't play king ten the same way, though.
We don't?
I feel like I'd play king ten pretty similar.
Uh, it's probably gonna check Ray, it's probably, it might check race turn or flop. More.
Maybe, maybe the turn you could. You just call. This is fine.
Can I snap call now?
Yes.
This is a completely different scenario, like.
I snap call without any judgment. Thank you.
Oh, you just got it.
That would, that one made you three hundred and sixty-eight big blinds, though, Louis. The other one.
Straight, didn't he?
Well, it doesn't matter. Yeah, it happens sometimes.
I hear you, yes.
Uh, this is it gonna be a check for me.
Well.
You can bet it. Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's like the stone hole bottom of the range. And we have a straight draw. And he has some auto folds, which is clubs.
Can we see how king ten? Can we see how king ten played last hand?
Kinda, I am kinda curious. King ten is an interesting one. Grayson, oh, sorry, sorry.
Uh, here. Here. Expand. The hat. The river.
Uh, flop, sort of flop.
Flop. Or in position or out of position?
Uh, we, it's the flop, that's on us. Lot of it in our way. So we check?
Yeah.
They bet whatever they bet, three something, right? Or two, what did they bet?
I forced it to do three point seven.
Yeah. And it does check race, so.
I mean, it's most calling.
Well, I see when we get to the river with it.
Raise or call?
Uh, call.
Burn, you wanna check? Wanna?
Burn, wait, check, check, right?
No, bet big. And that's holding on the turn.
We're just falling turn. Well, you have king ten. That's amazing.
Man. Is he using that as a lot? He is every time. So he gets here on the turn, Ken, sorry.
Who's folding king ten there?
I, I am.
With a open-ended straight draw on an overcard?
On a turn after a big bet? For a. A. Eleven, twenty-two percent, and he's betting fifty-five. Just make the hand twenty-two percent of the time.
Oh, we have a king two, we have an overcard.
I counted that, I think.
I counted that as well. Okay, whatever. So we call here?
No. Yep. I'm not calling here. I'm just falling in game.
Oh, okay.
Go mine.
Okay.
My tone board cuts all your cards by twenty-five percent.
Forty-four big line per hundred.
Ugh.
Now, um.
These donk bets with this shit are these leads.
Alright, seven.
Yeah, I'm out. Savage. I'll never do these rarely, like one in, one in a thousand.
Why? Yeah, that works so much.
I literally bluffed a five flush board the other day, but I can't remember like honestly how, that's like so rare. And it was just versus a particular player that I felt was really weak.
You just gotta have to, you know.
If he show, if he showed passivity, then I do. And if he showed continuous aggression, then I don't. Simple.
The E flat call with queens. And play this all the way.
Yep.
Uh, check here. What do you guys wanna do here?
I play check.
I bet. But I bet small. Same maybe, it doesn't matter. Whatever you want.
Alright, now I'm going like, big.
I'm over bet.
I don't hate an overbet here, to be honest. I like five, five, five or eight, four.
Five, five, five for me.
I think both are bad options.
Why?
We got good showdown.
Well, you you think this king's good, good showdown?
Yeah.
I'm tripped on this board.
Okay, so. I'm checking here.
Five, five, five for me, but let them decide.
How about that showdown?
Yeah, no, you guys are right. Overbetting.
Yeah, you don't block the flush, so he is gonna pick a flush draw sometimes, so you're gonna, that's gonna make our bet sizing bigger. We're gonna be behind here a lot, so we benefit from fold equity, but like, we can assume a king and ace and. But like, we can assume a king and ace and a nine are all good cards.
And it's that thing like, it's a relatively dynamic board where the turn is kind of a brick.
Yep.
I mean, five, yeah, he doesn't have five four, so yeah, it's a brick.
Uh, I guess, alright, this is miserable. Do you fold? I would be tempted to fold. I would maybe just let it go.
Oh.
We're not doing too great.
I had to fold. I think it's kind of close, but it's fold.
Alright, he got the miracle turn, the miracle turn.
It happens every day against me though.
The miracle turn.
I gotta sign off guys. I gotta some work to do and.
Take it easy, Chris.
Been a, been a while.
Yeah, I'm glad you stopped by, man. Thanks for coming by.
It's a really good program. It's really, really good program.
Anytime, Chris. Have a good one.
Okay, hopefully Friday. I'm on the night shift, so I don't get to sleep till three or four in the morning.
You got, you got some big tournaments coming up, right?
Oh yeah, I had one yesterday.
Good luck, man, in your games.
Thanks, yeah. We got a whole bunch of World Series events this month. I have three days off, a whole month planned. So anybody coming out with a series?
I'm coming out, but probably around, uh, like first week of July.
Okay, good.
Dolly's out there.
Yeah, Dolly's out there. I have a piece of them.
Who, who is that?
Dolly.
Oh.
Uh, how do we play that? We just call?
Uh, I would probably just play call here. You could raise though.
Raising a lot. Oh, we can.
Dog.
I also wanna like over bet spots like this because, um, you can over bet off of a chop and you can get called by someone trying to play the chop.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I honestly, I don't hate that.
Um. Okay.
What was the turn action?
Check, check?
Check, check.
Oh yeah, dude, just go, just jam it, man.
I'll look at it. That's too much, no?
It's a straight on the board.
That's the thing. He can, okay, he can call you with, uh.
No, you just check. I guess you wanna, you wanna capture, capture his bluffs.
And then jam over the bluff.
Oh.
So if they bluff, if they bluff in game, check. If they don't bluff in game, probably donk jam is better.
And if you've been aggressive like dumb jamming is so like. You put him to the test, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Check.
Deck or go small.
Check raise?
Call.
Ah, I don't know Joey, I don't know. You really have much worse queens? And then we have a spade.
I don't think you get to fold having the spade.
He doesn't have like, uh, the best aces.
To. Yeah, definitely. Jack spades the nuts.
So I'm raising a lot here. I don't know.
Raising.
Yeah, raising.
Raising is kind of spicy. I think it's good enough to call as well.
We don't have a lot of raises on a monotone board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on team Joey here.
Okay, okay, that's right.
Yeah, the EV is competitive. If you go for the clicky raise, it's like not a, not a disaster.
And this scenario is really static, right? Sometimes especially.
Like we saw before.
How, how much monotone boards have we done today? There's some.
A lot.
Not enough.
And you wanna know what Louis? You wanted a check raise every single one of them.
Louis, we didn't get enough of them that people still want to check raise them.
Why is it keep giving us?
I don't know, but you, 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 you might have a hidden setting somewhere or something.
Can, can we check raise monotone boards when deep stacks? So we can get a little bit of money in? Like if you're like two hundred deep?
Well, maybe that's a thing Louis, but. For this scenario at this depth.
Cause, cause I, I don't, I done it the other day where I check raise ace, jack of spades on like queen, ten. Do soul spades.
No, no, that would be good.
Yeah, and I got all the money in.
Yeah. I like that.
If I just called, I wouldn't have got the money, be able to get the money in.
Yeah. We call or we fold? That's, for me, it's really close. I haven't fallen.
Uh, I like fold. Or jam.
Or jam.
Alright, so this is like one of those spots where. You have the effective nuts because he doesn't have ace queen really. Where you might bet more, but we have the spade, so that means you probably check more.
Yeah. We checked. I have. And then this time, I mean, we're gonna raise.
Uh, you, you might just call, but I think raising's good. No, yeah, raising's a good.
He's sized up.
The check give up.
You sure?
No, I'm never sure.
That's a good, that's a good response, Ken.
This is one of your buffs on it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll say the forty-two percent of the time, I check a hundred percent of the time. It's gonna be a fold to a bet.
Triple barrel it off, man. You got an under pair. This is the only way you have to do it. He doesn't have ace king.
Lewis knows that way.
Louis saw me do it yesterday.
Yeah.
And I would have folded it, but, but the fucking guy flowed me with ace high and I fucking tripled it like, wow, I wasn't trying to fold ace.
And then the guy just hit the ace and then.
Have to fold.
Well, he was not gonna fold. Uh, check.
This might bet some.
Check raise.
I swear it's always like. What kind of board are we getting like?
Well, it's putting us in tough spots, which is good, right? We don't want it to be easy.
Now, the question is, do we give up here? I think he's gonna have a lot of kings. That's the thing. Which is not.
We have nine high, no pair, no draw. How are we? How are we doing? I think I'm giving up.
Cause, cause the board's very good for imposition.
Bro.
I mean, may, maybe we bluff now.
This hand just sucks. Like we have, we have ten, like ten X, you know, like the box of straight, like.
Oh, it was actually. So Jack nine here and he's a jet, right?
Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah.
Check. I'd bet like two point five now.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense. One.
I think, I think with that action, he has to call a small bet with it, with any ace.
Wouldn't, would it be better to be one? The flush completed, it's a pair board. Yeah, it's a one.
I thought he'd have to call that. That's why I wanted to bet the jack.
I thought he was calling. Bucket eights, six X. This is a spot where I think we need to bet a lot.
Hmm, I would play check here more.
It's, yeah, it's kind of a dry board. So we can either bet small or check.
What, like, what, what, what's the worst king he's calling with? It's like king tens, the worst offsuit king. I think it's king ten. So you're, you're like blocking. The combos you get value from.
One thing I. I think king ten's folded a lot, like at least some percentage of the time.
He's calling some suited kings, right?
Hmm, well, he's got some suited ones.
Yeah, suited kings, but.
I'd wear ahead of.
Oh, don't click nothing yet. I gotta comment if I can get it in.
Just check cool, man.
Good luck, Ken.
So I think this would be a, like a particular texture where almost every combo we have is gonna bet some frequency and none probably full frequency. So this might be like a ki, a type of board that like you might want to randomize on if you do that stuff.
I'm going fifty-five percent.
I'm checking.
I'm going to Miami.
We're out of position, man.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a lot. I don't, I don't have a fifty percent.
We need to pull around this board.
Yeah, but king high super dry is still like.
Yeah, there you go. Every single combo bets, that's what I thought.
But the king eye is like the best spot because he, when he calls in position, he's super tapped on kings, right?
But if, oh yeah, no, I mean, it is good, but that's why we get to, that's actually why we get to bet a lot, bet small.
Yeah, I mean, if you're betting every combo, you're not gonna use a large bet, right?
We're out of position. We have to check alone.
You're right, Ken. But it's weird, right? Because it's not, it's checking sixty percent.
That's why these are like, if you're gonna identify a board that's gonna bet a lot with every, like at least some with every combo, it's probably actually not bad to randomize once in a while.
Yeah, you know, we, we can't, we can't bet big. The, the ranges are too, um.
Alright, so. If you. Think they're over folding, it's probably better to be betting.
Yeah. Good point. If they're fold to C bets high, barrel, right?
Probably better. But on the conversely, like if they're. Calling too much, then. I feel like. Yeah, I feel like just some of the check knows are easier to navigate.
I think they're, if they're like a passive calling station, you have to bet.
Why would you bet if they're a calling station?
Cause he calls with stuff worse than.
Cause they'll call with sevens, they'll call with threes, they'll call with.
Pocket fives.
Pocket five.
So if they play cha, if you play check, check, then. There, we're gonna be more capped and you're gonna just get bets through more frequently on later streets now.
That depends on the loose passive player. If you're, if you're having, if you're against like a typical loose passive player that I find in the live games, you could go for three streets of value with a hand like that.
Hmm.
As long as you don't go too big on any one street. A tricky hand. Diamonds might want to bluff. I don't know though.
I wouldn't.
Ooh. What size did it bet on a turn? You clicked so fast.
A check, check on the turn.
Yeah, but it had twenty percent bets. So I thought maybe bet small, but it looked like it was actually a bigger bet.
Big bet. You're betting the eight or not betting the seven, I think.
Yeah.
It's but sucks. I think it's just a check.
Do we turn this into a buff?
We could, but the pot is too small. There's nothing to win. We've got showdown.
I don't think that matters. Size of the pot.
With us. Let's be our Ken.
No, but we still like, we'll fight for two big blinds. We'll fight for eight big blinds. It's like if it's a plus E B bluff, we'll go for it, but.
Yeah, just four X charm, man. Put them in the box. Uh. You know, risk fifty to win eight.
That always, uh. A fold?
So.
So king eye boards are the ones with you, we bet the mouse from this and that.
We, we also bet the ace flush draws where we have no overcard more often.
Let's just make sure. So. The highest frequency bet we use is gonna be. Two point two. And then it's pair boards or trip boards. Ten, ten, six, ten, 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 queen, queen, six. Okay. I thought there would be a lot of king eyes here.
Kings not a great board because a lot of the, the flooding range is gonna have like, it's gonna be overcards and pairs, you know? Like Broadway card and pairs.
We check a lot on king eye boards.
They are calling a lot, like Button's probably calling down on like king five suited.
We, we check a lot on every board, so our position.
Pretty flat. So they got a lot of kings.
So boards will bet the mouse actually nine high and eight high. I thought it was king eye.
Yeah, so we, yeah, yeah, you should watch, uh, Matt Asic discuss it's like, um, you get to bet the most on nine, nine high. And once, and if the guy checks, imposition bets most on nine high as well. It's a bit weird.
So I, I imagine Button isn't defending off suit nines. They might three bet like ace nine, king nine off, maybe king nine off.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly why, yeah.
And, and those middle and connected boards are also highly contested because they have all of that suited scapper stuff and connected stuff in that portion of the range. So. Leads to larger bets, I think, on nine high. Nine, I connected anyway.
Okay, interesting. I'm going eleven.
Yeah, just raise, get in.
More like eight.
Bluffing with this hand.
I want your bets though. Like I pure check this.
Check.
Wow. Okay. We can check, we can check.
Cool.
Hmm. Okay.
Yeah.
If he betted, it'd be a fucking real tough spot, man. I feel like diamonds would be bad.
But we wanna go. Check.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the top of our range checks a lot here. And as we get towards the middle and bottom of the range, it's probably all gonna bet some frequency.
Yep.
Can we look at the range on the flap? How it's constructed? Just. Snapshot of the pictures and the colors. Uh, top does a good bit of betting still.
Betting big, polar, eighty percent pot.
Ace queen plus though. I guess they're value bets, right? Ace queen plus, ace jack doesn't want to bet much.
Yeah, it's betting inside for. For value. Trying to get down my words. Um. So we can't really check right here. We'll just call.
Deck. Check and cross your fingers he checks back, otherwise check fold.
Okay. But yeah, we're gonna lose. The clubs, do you want to bet more with clubs or not really?
So, we're not gonna get ace, jack, ace, queen. He doesn't have ace king to fold, so we're not gonna get ace, jack, or ace, queen to fold, right? Um, so like, I don't know if we want to bet this. I would check.
Okay.
I would check fold honestly.
But if you had a seven of plans?
Yeah, I think uh, you could probably definitely barrel that some. Any ace seven honestly.
Okay.
I think it just fold. Uh, you could bet this probably fifty fifty.
Why do you want to bet? I think you want to bet with five without the spade, no?
Well, I don't, I think it's got straight redraw, you can win the hand right away. Sometimes you have the spade for backup if you get called. So I think there's like three things there to make it reasonable to bet some frequency.
Mm-hmm.
I don't like betting here.
Yeah, I think you want to bet more without the spade.
I don't think it pure bets by any stretch of imagination, but I think for sure it's gonna mix in some bets on this.
It's, it's gonna bet two combos and then triple off on certain moments.
It bets more without the spade, although it's not really that obvious.
Uh, actually, I can barely ever bet. I mean, it's like ten percent of the time, I mean.
Weird. Doing a weird one.
The thing is, it's so few, it's, it's so few combos that in Silverland, it's just gonna triple it off because it's like point one combo.
Oh, so we got a gutter now, right? It went check, check. This makes me want to polarize. Checks.
Makes me want to check.
Uh, check.
Definitely. Oh, look at this.
Days.
Uh, pair board. We had a lot of pair board in the aggregated report we looked at. And it was all like jack, jack, X, ten, ten, X, queen, queen, X.
Is this a check raise?
Uh, the big, was big bets.
Oh, we bet.
Oh no, it was two point two small. Like this here.
Okay.
And then yeah. It's just because of the nature of the board. And then. You just drill the street, you know, sometimes.
Feels like a check to me, but.
Uh.
Oh wait, we got a straight.
Yeah, yeah, but he has king queen, so.
Yeah, that's more.
I think six point one.
Tops.
Yeah. Okay, okay, good. We'd want to polarize here.
Why?
Cause we're out of position.
It's a relatively dry board.
I would check raise personally.
You can bet or check, you can bet or check raise, it's gonna be both.
But it's polarizing.
Yeah, 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 so.
Check or bet big? Oh, no, 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 no. I'm gonna force him to that. Oh, he's checking back. Okay, whatever, whatever.
That's really interesting. When he checks back, then we size up turn, right? Like we overbet? I think so, yep.
So we lose the second time, right? We found that one. What was that?
Can we talk about what our bluffing strategy is? Because this is for value of course, but what's a bluffing strategy when? We hit this turn.
So like ace three? Ace five, no?
Yeah.
He's got a hand, going over bet?
Yeah, that would make some sense.
Even like the king five, if we add that in range, which I think we do.
What else?
Something between the queen and eight, that straight draw as well.
Okay, ace three and a five, we got that. Boom, boom.
Yeah, a little jack ten, jack nine.
Jack, okay, we bet shots. Jack ten, yeah. King ten? What is king ten here? Just paint cards?
Six, five, seven, six.
King eye seems to be willing to do it a lot to get ace to fold. What is it? Like it's red, right?
And like under pairs, like he can't just, like pocket threes is not happy to just call.
What do we get versus that like that? Uh, king eye, I want to do it to get ace eyes to fold, so king, queen is doing it. Uh, oh no, that's a fair good kicker.
No, but look at him, he's folding pocket fives, pocket sixes, he's folding, he's folding lots.
Yeah. But these kings here, they're getting a side to fold. Okay. So bet eight? Fall. The cookies in the meetings. We go all in.
Yeah, I like it.
No, the machine does not like it.
Oh, the pair, I didn't see the eight paired, which is like a big part of his continuing range, right?
Is it?
Should be.
It was in the other example, is it still the case?
I think it should because he, he checked back flop, he doesn't need to bet flop, but when we hyperpolarize turn, he's like, well, sometimes he has an error, I have an eight, I'll call.
He has a bunch of eights again.
Yeah. Like if you paired the two or the four, I, or it just made a blank, I think it would jam, but the eight, I think is particularly bad.
So there's really that thing going on with eight X, nine X, right? In this scenario? So that's good, that's interesting. And now. We just check and pray. Thank you, jeez. Oh, goodness. How? How does he have so many eights? King eye, we can probably bet here. We would want to have a spade to bet here. To bet or not to bet?
I'm not betting this.
You're not betting this, alright.
You gotta call though, I think.
One point thirty-five, at least a call, right? Now.
Uh, you picked up a gutty, but probab, maybe, I don't know, you're unblocking the, you're unblocking spades too.
So big for an ace five.
Yeah, I would probably, I would fold in game, but I, I think the solver is gonna be closer than we think. No, it's not. Thirty-three is not close.
Hee, thirty-three big blind, no?
Thirty-three is punting.
Let's check raise. Bet, 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 no?
You might be able to polarize this.
Why?
The four is a blank. He is capped himself by checking back and you got some reasonable bluffs on the river. So like a five's probably a good bluff, a seven's probably a good bluff.
But no equity, right? For your river, only.
Oh, it's, oh no, yeah, you got bluff equity. That's all you're reaching for here. Like this is an air ball. But you get, you get a lot of better hands to fold too, is the other part of that equation.
Yeah, but you're not drawing to anything here.
No, you're not.
Uh, something, we could have, oh. Well there.
Happy days.
So we overbet.
No, why? I, I don't know if you go over. I would bet though, I, I'd bet five.
Maybe last? No overbets.
You can, you can overbet, you can.
My goodness. But yeah, so overbet on the river. That was a good one.
So he's bowing a lot of his king X that are better, I guess. The king queens of the world, king tens.
Yeah.
King nines.
Alright, so if you're watching on YouTube, thanks a lot. Subscribe, hit the notification bell, join our Patreon. Join our Discord, get in the community.
Find our Twitter.
Find our.
Find our Twitter.
Am I missing one?
I think you got everything.
No, hang on, I'm missing one. Leave a comment if you want, if you want to see a subject. You want to see like a spot like forty big blinds, uh, small blind, three bet pot, out of position, something crazy, let us know in the comments. Thanks a lot.